Our country to become more fragile now than I have ever seen it in my lifetime. We've allowed ourselves to be dragged away from our basic, core principles that have made this country unique and strong, the individual freedom. I'm asking, and we are asking, all these people to please be bold and be different and think with us. You could say, "Well, why us? Why not us? Why here? Why not here? Why now? Why not now?"
Thank you.
The three-mile is irrelevant.
You have three minutes.
The process, I know, but the process is flawed. Please pull the three-mile out.
Thank you for your comment. That's all of the signed up. If there's, people have some comments later when we have the, discuss the ordinance. We'll be able to take some questions, but, you know, if I open it up, everybody's gonna wanna talk, and those are the only two at this time to sign up. We'll let other comments come in when we get down to the actual ordinance. Carl, thank you, and Rebecca for coming in and speaking to the council. I appreciate it. You take the time. We'll now go to our public hearing with Richard Patterson on Roosevelt Drive at 401. Is Richard here?
I haven't seen him. He came in today to talk to, talk to me about it. I wasn't in the office at the time. So he's, I don't see him, I haven't seen him here, so I can't speak for him.
So what do you need from us now this evening, Chris? Excuse me, I'm here. Just move on.
Just move on. I mean, the notice has been issued. He's had an opportunity to appear. Failing that, he should comply then with the, with the notice.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda for June 2nd council meeting minutes and appropriation six B. Any questions from the council? No questions on the table. Motion to pass the consent agenda in its entirety. Agreed by Council Richard that we pass the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda in its entirety. You'll have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Brown. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, will you?
Gingler?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. And we have ordinance 2164, the franchise agreement with Rolling Hills for service to Rural Water District number three headquarters. Any questions for staff?
Whose ideas this? I mean, why, how did this come about here? I see the numbers here, but who, who come up with the, with the plan, I guess?
They approached us last year about a number of things, but when they were gonna build our new headquarters up here on 24. They were originally in Scottsville, they moved over here a couple of years ago, actually, to avoid to have their, their headquarters here. And so they were building out there, and they came in to discuss, "Well, what about electric service?" So we said, "Well, you're in our territory, so it'd cost anywhere from thirty to forty thousand to run electric service out there." And they said, "Well, that sounds like a lot." So they, they approached the rural co-op, and they said, "Well, it costs probably about five hundred dollars for us to serve out there. We just dropped the line." They serve the trucking outfit that's right next to them, and they have for a number of years, apparently. We don't have a franchise agreement there. I'm not sure when that all came about. That's before my time. So I said, "You know, the best I can do for it, if you wanna go that route, I can propose a franchise agreement, and we can work with Rolling Hills to do that." We sent them a copy of the agreement, and they ran it through their attorneys, had some changes, sent it back. And so this is kind of the final version of that.
Is that inside city limits?
They're inside, yeah. They're inside the city limits, yeah.
Does that affect anything to the airways, to the airport?
No, no, no. No, they're, they're to the east of, you know, where the runways are and all that.
What's the circumstance? Same as city?
Uh, we, the franchise, we charge it to be five percent on there, so it's not our franchise, you know? It'd be charged to somebody else's for service, and we can't charge, I believe we charge it off the eight percent. So it's, it'd be an office building, and it sounds like that'd be a lot, but...
Are we doing that with the other things they're serving?
No, because, well, we did the same territory on, on those, like with Rolling Hills headquarters up there. We actually did territory swaps, and there's no franchise agreement with them. Uh, so that's a little bit different, so that, that leaves a little bit of confusion on, on that. So we don't lose the territory. Say on that, we did. They're out of our territory, and then we gained some territory in the east side of town. On this, we retain the territory. They can serve as, they can have a franchise agreement. If they don't, then we would go back to serving them. So if the city does grow out that way at some point, and we take more of that territory and we're running out there, they could become a part of our, our service at some point in the day.
Is the tech calling in the city limits?
Yes.
But these people serve them, right?
Uh, that's split. That's split.
But do we, we don't get any franchise fee for that?
Uh, for the part they serve, no. Because there was, again, it was a territorial split, rather than having, even they're in the city limits, and this is the tricky part, where you're in the city limits, but there's a, there's electric territories, and sometimes informed that the limits, city limits sometimes don't. So that's, that's what you're doing here. So they're in the city limits, they're in our territory, but we allow somebody else to serve them, just basically because of the, we're getting the cost right now.
But we could vote tech.
They're, they're in the city limits, but they're kind of split between the two, and that deal is done now, I don't wanna get...
New building. We serve.
Uh, yes, any new, new construction, we serve up there on, on that city. So there's a little corner up there, and, you know, if we didn't do, they would probably build somewhere else as well, because they don't wanna pay thirty thousand dollars to have a, or one building up there. That's, that's pretty significant, I think, for it. So, all right, best I can do is come up with a, a agreement. Uh, I'm not sure, I think there's other people that are in the situation when they're being served by the rural, or, you know, vice versa, but there is no agreements or anything. And I didn't wanna repeat that experience. At least we have something here to go on, so we get back, so if you're thirty years from now, we'll go, "Okay, all right, this is recorded here as an agreement, you can say anything, and we know what's going on."
We have Shandber's on, right?
Yes.
How did we not get J.D. Truss?
I think, I think he came in, and they said it was too expensive to run out. And I, this is what, you know, that was a while back, and I said, "Well, you can, you can try." And so that's what they did. They just went to the roll. But there's no agreement between us, but they are in our territory. So, you know, really, there should be, we should be either serving them, or there should be some kind of agreement, but there isn't. So I didn't wanna do that either. So, and in the future, we might wanna think about approaching them about something, either serving them or a grant, because right now, they're just kind of... So, anyway, so that's, that's I could do as far as saying that, but, so they get their building, and then the rural co-op serves them pretty quickly and cheaply, and they go on, and we'll see how much they're gonna do out there, and we get a little bit of a franchise agreement on it.
They're gonna start soon?
Yeah, they'd like to. Yeah, they, they talked about starting this year, so how quickly. And I think it'll be a relatively small building, so it's not gonna be anything elaborate. So, anyway, so I figure this is gonna be the most efficient way to handle this at this point.
They're gonna be paying property taxes.
Uh, I don't know if their tax is exempt or not. I don't know if the rural, uh, water districts are, are property tax. I, I would think probably, being a nonprofit, probably you're not. I bet that they have some tax exemption in there, but I don't, I don't know what. So, anyway, anything else on the line? Is that the answer, pretty much? Yeah, it's more complicated than I thought, so we've been going for a few months on this. Anyway, so, yeah, they're ready to build, and it's gonna be the easiest way to do it.
Any other questions for Glenn? I entertain the motion to accept the ordinance 2164. So, Glenn? I know by Councilman Gingler that we approved ordinance 2164, the franchise agreement with Rolling Hills for service to Rural Water District number three, seconded by Councilman Addy. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Addy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is ordinance 2165, the comprehensive plan is what's up. And Greg Earl would like to address the council.
I'll keep it brief, but, Mr. Mayor and council members, I apologize for not getting on the agenda. I didn't know I'd be in town tonight. I thought that we would have a work session directly with the planning commission, you guys, that didn't take place, so I figured there's some things I'd like to tell you, and if you had any questions for me, feel free. First of all, the biggest thing I heard was, "What took so long for the planning commission to get this done?" I mean, I heard that over and over, and I'm sure you guys are like, "What in the world are they doing?" Well, the opposition was so overwhelming. We did not have one person in all the public hearings, all the meetings, stand up in favor of it. The only people in favor of it were people that were city officials and the three people on the, the planning commission. Not one person. We had hundreds at those meetings, okay? When you're trying to get something through that everybody's against, it takes time. When we first got the first plan, unbelievable, the amounts of things that were against Kansas statutes that we found in those plans. We kept having to revise it, revise it, revise it. I don't remember how many times, I think I've got at least six of them at home, that we have changed. Had this gone through, the city would have been wide open to litigation. It would have been a mess. This is part of what took so long. Now, as in my testimony, which you should have copies of, I assume you got them from May 12th, okay? We can't zone with this plan. The city may not zone, okay? Without amending the plan. That would take the whole process again. So all you've got right now is you've got a paper saying you have jurisdiction. Now, with all this opposition, if you were to send that back and say, "You know what? Nobody wants this," this would be a time for you guys to step up and above and just be done with it. I asked for a vote before we voted this plan in of the planning commission, they wouldn't take it out, okay? I will back this plan, only because the way it's worded, can't go out there and zone, okay? Now, if you wanna bring this community together, and all these people, and bring, because this is a big fight, you've got people really angry. We have businesses all over saying, "Look, stop this. It's costing us money. Here's your chance to stand up and above, put it to rest, bring everybody together again." Thank you for your time. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Matt.
If we can't zone, that's, as I understand it, that's the big opposition, is they want to zone, right? What's the opposition with the plan now?
The wording. Nobody wants, if, if I was to say, "I have jurisdiction on your land. Can't zone it, but I have jurisdiction on your land." That's still leaves things wide open to future.
That's jurisdiction for the purpose of if we want to zone in the future?
You, you would have to amend the plan, and there is a process.
Right.
It's a long one, just like we went through. What I'm saying is, nobody wants it. I mean, I don't know who wants it, because I, I, I kept asking and asking, "Somebody stand up for it." It was in the paper, it was in the news, that I had asked for someone to come to the meetings that will explain to me why they want it. Not one person. So...
Well, I just got one big question.
Sure.
Why have, why shouldn't they have asked me for something that was done forty years ago? Why even bring it up?
Well...
It shouldn't have been done. Forgot about it. It was in effect, which nobody can still prove to me that's in effect. I've asked and asked, and nobody can still prove it to me. Why keep bringing it up except to start some big fight?
Well, that's why I say lay it to rest.
Yeah.
I mean, I've heard the argument that, "Well, we haven't done anything with it for twenty years," or whatever. Well, if that's the case, and it will make people happy and bring this community together, I mean, we're all one big community. I don't care if you live ten miles out of town. We all, our kids, we go to games together, we go to church together, all these things we do together, we're all one big community, and if it makes the majority of the people happy, isn't that the thing to do? Isn't that why we're all here, to serve the people?
Greg, you said this is costing businesses money. How so?
Well, because people are gonna knock shopping void.
Why, why that?
Well, I, I, okay, okay, let me finish. You asked, okay? I have, I have letters from businesses, which I'll be glad to show you. I've had business people tell me, "Look, this is costing me. Ask your mayor what it could possibly, if there's any chance that it could cost CPS money." Do you believe that maybe one farmer would get angry enough to pull out of there? Yes? There you go, Bob.
And I, I would respond to that by saying, and you're saying, "Why hasn't anybody come to speak against this?" And, "Well, there's intimidation going on," where people, if they stand up and they say, "I'm gonna do this," they're facing economic retaliation, you know? And so why would anybody do this when they have nice city organization that's set up that can take that heat, and they don't have to advocate? There, there's a safety in having representative government defending citizens of Lloyd. I would argue that's a big reason why people aren't coming to this meeting, since they know they're walking into a buzzsaw. We don't think that's a...
There's a lot of people there, but I tell you what, I, I feel pretty safe with them all. I don't think they're a bunch of criminals.
Well, not when they're...
I understand what you're saying.
And, and possibly sensitive to it, or, not only is their business dries out, I mean, that's intimidation.
Well, okay, I understand, but if there was a bunch of them, okay, say Bob, he owned businesses here for years. I guarantee you, he's gonna stand up, I don't care what group out there, for what he believes. And if there's business owners out there, I believe they will too. I mean, perhaps some are intimidated, that's not what people want here. Nobody's here to intimidate anybody. They're here because they're concerned, they're, it affects their lives every day. And like I say, I believe that if you were to just vote this out, it would bring this community together, and people would think so much more highly of the Beloit City Council, because they stood up and did the right thing.
Greg, what will this do to those people in that three-mile?
As it stands now, you can't do anything. You can't zone it. You can amend the plan, go through the process again. People would be more comfortable with not in there. This is what the people want.
Where did, where did the rumor, whatever, come about that those within the three-mile zone would be annexed into the city? Was that part of the original comprehensive plan?
No. There is, there is ways of annexation. When I asked Glenn about them, he said, "That's a really hard process." That's all I know about that.
So there wasn't any talk about those people within the three-mile?
Well, it's, it's concerns, for sure.
Was there any talk about in the plan that people within that three-mile jurisdiction would be annexed into the city?
I don't recall the specifics on that, Kent. I'll be honest with you. I'd have to read it over again.
That's where I have had a couple of people that have asked me about it. And I said, "Okay, what do you have against the comprehensive plan?" And they says, "We don't wanna be annexed into the city." And I says, "Where did you get that information?" And they said, "Well, that's what I understand is gonna happen, is if this plan goes in, all of us within that three-mile ETJ are gonna be annexed into the city." And that's why I'm asking you that question.
No, no, I don't think you would ever annex everybody, but I don't know. I'm not...
I can speak to that.
Sure, go ahead. I'm interested.
I'll, I'll admit, the city really screwed up the rollout of this. And I remember that meeting a year ago, where the agency that was doing our study for us labeled it in the press release that this is a city annexation plan in, in three-mile zone, right during harvest, and all you guys were on tractors going, "Oh, crap, I gotta get in there and protect my farm." Horribly done, and then when people came and, and gave their opinions about it, the, the facilitator made comments like, "Well, we cancel, we will." Again, bungled is putting it like, "I'll pass it back." And I'm under no illusions, anything I say here is gonna change anybody's mind and how they're gonna vote tonight on this, but I, I'd just like to tell you why I'm in favor of approving this. The reason I'm in favor of approving it is because I know that there's grant applications that ask if we have certain things. You check these boxes off, and they, and they rate your, your grant according to how many boxes you can check off, and you get a score, and then they compare Beloit versus Clay Center versus all these other towns that are submitting grant applications to the state. And whoever has a better score has a higher chance of getting money. Recently, we got a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we were able to do wonderful things. We were able to demolish an eight homes in town that were falling down. We were able to keep people from getting, uh, penalties from the city because they weren't doing basic building maintenance. We were able to get them neighborhood revitalization money. We've been able to do a lot of good things with the money that's been coming in. We got a CDBG grant that is revitalizing some buildings downtown. Some good has come from the fact that we have comprehensive plan. However, what started this? Well, the last comprehensive plan we had was in 1996, and they're supposed to be updated every ten years. Well, here it is, 2015, we still have not updated that 1996 plan. That's why we're here, why we're talking about it. We need to have a plan so that we can stay competitive in getting grants...
Right.
...to help citizens. Now, I, I, I know you are representing a significant population of this area, and I respect everything you've done in your service to the planning commission. You've done good work helping us clean up that statutory stuff that you were pointing out as problems. And I think you deserve to be commended for that. But still, I, I know in Concordia, for example, there's no ex-territorial zoning, and, and recently, some people put up cell towers outside city limits, and the property owners inside the city of Concordia have been at their city council saying, "These things are an ISO, they're affecting my property values, and they wanna do something about it, but because they don't have this ex-territorial zoning, and none of this stuff's out there, the city is powerless to stop it," and people are taking a hit that live in city. The city of Lloyd has over three thousand people in it, and I believe there's fifty homes in the, maybe more, you probably correct me on this, that are living outside. So there is, there is a disparity in the numbers that we're talking about. Yes, you guys have vocalized, you're energized, you're here, you're exercising your, your rights to be heard, and we hear you, believe me, we hear you. But also, we were elected to represent citizens of Lloyd and protect their property interests as well. And I'm of the opinion that, that, you know, we've got a north campus coming in with half million yarder homes being built that are right next to the city limits. What's to stop somebody from putting in an ISO right across the thing that lowers the property values of those, and people stop buying those? The city's got a...
You already put a Dollar General right in the middle of them. How silly is that? It's right there in front of them.
I'm just saying, you know...
I, I understand what you're saying, Matt.
That's my reason for how I'm gonna be voting.
Okay, I know I'm not gonna change your mind, but let me correct you on a couple things.
All right.
All those grants, yes, we need a comprehensive plan. There's no denying that. State statute says we need one, for all those grants, we need one. However, the three-mile doesn't need to be in there for those grants. Is Heather here?
No.
She's not here?
As I understand it, we have to show how the city's gonna develop in the future, correct?
Yeah, the city has five-hundred-and-sixty-seven acres of developmental land, according to the Hana Kealan comprehensive plan, that is developable. We've also stated that the city benefits more from developing within the city limits than branching out. The biggest concern for these people, if they could see a reason, we've even talked about a compromise where, okay, take a little bit here, if you wanna build twenty homes here, and you need a little zoning there, a buffer, whatever, people would be more open to that idea. Right now, our population's declined, we're trying to grow, people are doing great things to make this town grow, but until a person sees that, "Hey, you know what? They built these homes over here, and, and maybe they need a little bit of room around there, so, you know, I can let them zone a mile or half mile or whatever, you know, something reasonable," people would be open to that idea, I believe. But when you, they see nothing going on, population declining, room to grow inside the city, and when the opposition is so overwhelming, and, and there's Mike, there's probably a few people in town that are for it. I mean, you're for it, okay?
I, I would disagree with your statement that nothing's going on in the city of Beloit, because I look around city of Lloyd and I see a construction boom.
Outside, outside the city limits, I said. So...
Greg, I have a question.
Sure, Bob.
I, I really feel all this. I don't know what y'all are afraid of. I don't see what it matters what your land is zoned. Why do you worry about that? We're not giving control of your land. I'm here in communism and controlling. That's, has nothing...
Well, if you're zoning, you're telling people what they can do or what they can't.
No, no.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
Am I wrong, Greg? Is this the ground, isn't it going to stay agriculture unless the landowner decides to sell that to another person for another type of business in that three-mile ETJ? And then the city would have the jurisdiction to rezone it based on the type of business if it comes out of agriculture?
There, yes, and there's also gray areas there with the agriculture. There's counties now where...
But isn't that gonna have to go through the planning commission to get approved?
Yes.
If that would take place?
It would.
Two things about zoning, you know, if you had that out there, first of all, if somebody wants to do something next to your property, you have the right to come to the planning commission and oppose it, but like Kent said, you know, nothing's gonna change unless you start a commercial business. And speaking of zoning, you know, I, I used to own the store where, where State Farm is. Well, I bought that, and I found out it was zoned residential, but I'm getting popped pretty good for taxes, you know? So here, that thing's set all those years zoned residential, paying commercial taxes. So as far as what you're zoned, if you wanna change it, all you gotta do is come to the planning commission and apply for it.
But these people, the only representation they have is me and Cheryl Runner. Three people from the city. Do you understand what I'm saying?
We got three people from the city representing thirty-six-hundred residents, and you got two people representing, how many? Hundred fifty, two hundred?
Well, there's more than that.
So I don't see the relevance of that, the...
Let's say the county commissioners. We've got three county commissioners. One of them lives in Beloit. Who, who's the other two representing? I don't think they do anything with Beloit personally, you know?
Well...
Glenn told me one, the county commissioner.
Bob?
Yep.
I hate to interrupt. I represent everything from Eighth Street South and the middle of Mill Street East, which is probably forty percent of Beloit, plus all of Asherville, Lulu, Logan, and Salt Creek Townships. You reach the township too.
Thank you, Tom.
Cooper takes the...
Bob, did you have something on to ask me, or?
I just said, Glenn told me one, they took four. He was for this.
Who was that, Glenn?
Well, it was, we had, uh, the committee.
I moved for the award, that three award was 2165.
I don't know, I, I can't vote for, I can't vote for Mike Cooper.
I know, but I just...
I can vote for him, but I can't say I'll vote. But anyway, I didn't mean to take up so much of your time.
I had a motion on the floor of the council to, to approve the ordinance 2165, the comprehensive plan, seconded by Councilman Brown. Manny, we can take a roll call vote, no, excuse me. Is there any further discussion from the council?
Be serious.
Tony?